All right, so I'm gonna call the, uh, the meeting to order. This is the zoning board of appeals meeting Wednesday. So I'm sorry, Thursday, December 9th.
December?
December, I'm looking at this, I'm just, Jesus. Start again. We're gonna call the meeting to order. This is Thursday, March 9th, 2023. How's that? All right, so we have to approve some minutes. So we have December 14th first off. And this is, these are executive session minutes, so, uh, the motion would be to approve these, but not release them until all matters are resolved. What is the motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the, uh, meeting minutes from December 14th, 2022, uh, but because it was an executive session, to not allow those into the public record until all matters are resolved.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous. Then we have Thursday, January 12th, 2023.
I'd just like to point out the change that we made at the last minute on that. Um, gentlemen, if you look at page two on that, you're gonna see highlighted, I think it's the fourth paragraph, third or fourth paragraph. You made a last-minute revision. I didn't have a chance to distribute it. Um...
We have a motion to approve those?
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes for January 12th, 2023 meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. And then we have February 9th, 2023.
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes from our meeting on, um, Thursday, February 9th, 2023.
A sec, second time motion.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna stay on that one, just 'cause I live here at the meetings. Okay. 7:05 petition of Edward Duggan for finding per chapter 40, section 6, and a special permit per section 175-29. I'll just read the, uh, the hearing notice. Town of Abington zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, March 9th, 2023 at 7:05 PM at the Abington Town Offices, 500 Glenwood's Way, Abington, Mass. On the petition by Edward M. Duggan for a finding per chapter 48, section 6, and a special permit per section 175-29 to allow a 1.5% increase in lot coverage from 27.5% to 29% to allow construction of a two-car garage at 241 Lincoln Street. The property is located on assessors map 51, Lot 97, in the R30 zone. Good evening, Mr. Riley.
Good evening, Chairman Burbine. Uh, for the record, my name is Sean Riley, 500 Washington Street in Abington. I'm here representing the applicant, the owner, Mr. Edward Duggan, he goes by Ted. And with Ted tonight is his wife. You know, the lights are being adjusted for the camera, you're not, uh, seeing hallucinations yet. Melissa is with Ted, along with, uh, our favorite daughter, Addison. The Duggans are a family of now seven. They are the proud parents of five children, four boys and one daughter, Addison, who just finished basketball. Addison's youngest at seven, and the age runs up to 16. Uh, they have, uh, owned and lived in this house since 2008, and this is at 240 Lincoln Street. The house is, uh, the original house, it's an older house, over 100 years old. It faces Lincoln Street, and when constructed, it conformed in all regards to setbacks. Specifically, if you're looking at the front of the house on Lincoln Street, the right side of the house is 20 feet off the side yard line, which is required by the bylaws, a 20-foot side yard setback. Um, the proposal is, as the family's grown, uh, they need the house to grow, and obviously by the, the shape of this lot, it's a long rectangular lot, um, they are going to add to, if you were standing on Lincoln Street, you're adding to the rear of the house. If you're standing, standing on the newer street, Gordon Circle, which is a cul-de-sac that was built around 2002, um, then it's to the left of the existing house. You're looking at, on the screen right now, the existing condition plan, so it just shows the existing house, and it shows the existing paved driveway, which comes off of Gordon Circle. Um, and you can see towards what the Duggans call their backyard is their swimming pool and a basketball court to keep the kids busy, and, uh, they're pretty good athletes, I can attest to that. So we're here tonight for a special permit for lot coverage, and also the board to apply issue a section 6 finding to determine that the proposed garage addition with the room above, um, is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. We wouldn't have to be here to get any sort of setback relief with the finding if Gordon Circle was never built, because, because the street was built, our side yards now changed, so now we have two front yards and two rear yards. So with the, what I'm gonna call the right side of the house, as you're looking from Lincoln Street, used to be a 20-foot side yard setback, which conformed, now automatically becomes a 30-foot rear yard setback, and it becomes automatically non-conforming, which requires now, to add on to a non-conforming house, you need at least a finding, and that's what is before you tonight. The addition will not be any closer to the lot line, in fact, it kind of pulls a little bit farther away from the lot line, which is shown on the second sheet of the lodge plan, and which Mr. Mullen is now putting up on the screen. So there, there's the, uh, plan that shows the addition, and you can see the closest corner of the garage addition is 23.5, and then it pulls away to 25 and change, 25.3. So it doesn't ever get closer to the side, sorry, the rear lot line than the existing house. And we would submit that alone would hopefully help the determination that it's not substantially more detrimental, because it's not even getting closer than what it already is. The garage, if you compare the existing conditions to the current, to the proposed conditions, garage will basically replace a patio area that exists there now. They don't have a garage now, so Mom and Dad can't park the SUV, uh, to stay out of the snow, that's one of the big goals of this addition, is to be able to park, uh, some of the cars in the garage. Also, as we now have a 16-year-old in the house, there may be a likelihood of another car being added to the driveway, so the additional parking, obviously, with a family of seven, is gonna be a benefit. Above the garage, you can see on the floor plans that we've also submitted to you, is the proposed, um, the bonus room, the family room for the kids, uh, really for the whole family, the way it's designed, and they have a mudroom in the back, so as you pull in the garage, the kids can take off their boots and stuff in the mudroom before they enter the main house. We've given you, and Mr. Mullen is now showing you the elevation drawings, so you know what the house would look like when completed. Still continuing the same kind of Cape style with the peak roofs, it's a very attractive addition, um, and I think there is no detriment that would be shown to the neighborhood for this structure. The special permit is simply that, um, the existing property is, I think it was 27 and a, 27.5% lot coverage, meaning if you looked at the whole size of the lot, and then looked at how much of the lot is covered by either building or pavement, it's 27.5%. That also includes the pool. By putting in the addition and getting rid of the patio, there's a small up, upgrade to 29%, so that's where that 1.5% increase is. I've always had a question as to, I understand where a pool patio, a driveway, might be impervious surface in that calculation, but is the swimming pool water itself, is that area, I don't think it should be incalculated, because the whole thing about impervious is if the water hits it and it drains away, potentially to a neighbor. If it, if it rains in the pool, it doesn't drain away. We included it in the calculation anyhow to be most conservative, so it's, in reality, even less than 1.5% increase, but we still have to ask you for the special permit to approve this design. I think the plans speak for themselves, and, uh, the finding per terms of the statute, which we hope you'll, you will find, is that the proposed addition is not substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming structure to the neighborhood, and we would submit that we satisfy that threshold. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer, as Ted or, uh, Melissa or even Addison can help out too.
Any questions from any members of the board? Nope. Nope. So I'll open up to the floor, anybody here who would like to speak on this petition? If not, we'll bring it back to the, uh, the board, and I think we're, I'll sit with you, Sean, that's, it's... No questions?
You're good.
All right, so we can have a motion to oppose the hearing?
Motion to oppose the hearing.
You can't make that.
You can repeat it, though.
Hold my portion of the hearing?
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so now we can act on the petition itself. When do we do the, um, the finding first, I guess? So Mr. Riley's correct in how he framed it, and if it's, uh, the change or extension or alteration is not substantially more detrimental than the existing use, then he can...
Approve the finding?
Yeah, approve the finding, so...
We'll do it in two separate motions?
Yeah.
All right. Uh... I'd like to make a motion to approve the finding of the petition by Edward M. Duggan for finding per chapter 48, 6, um... For a two-car garage at 241 Lincoln Street. The property is located on assessors map 51, Lot 97, in the R30 zone.
Why don't we add that to be built in compliance, or substantial compliance would be, uh...
To be built in substantial compliance with the plans that were submitted today for this project?
Second.
In a second? Any discussion?
Could I, and, uh, you have to use the language, so, and that the board finds that it shall not be more subs...
Substantial, yeah, that's part of...
You'll put that in there, right?
That's part of the motion.
Great.
As, but, as the plan, right?
Yes, yeah, yeah, yes. So we've made a motion?
He made a motion, I second that.
I second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And then we have a special permit regarding the lot coverage. So it should be, I think the requirement is, uh, not more than 25%, but through a special permit, they can get an increase, if it's a, uh... Right now, it's 27.5, and they wanna go to 29%. We have a motion?
Uh, I'd like to make a motion on the petition of Edward M. Duggan, um, for a, uh, special permit per 175-29 to allow a 1.5% increase in lot coverage from 27.5% to 29%, as, as indicated on the submitted plans, to allow construction of a two-car garage at 241 Lincoln Street. Property is located on assessors map 51, Lot 97, in the R30 zone.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous.
Thank you for your time, gentlemen.
Good luck.
This already looks nice, it's gonna look even better, right?
Wish I had that asphalt going, I have the kids...
Yeah, I'm kidding, listen.
Okay. There's cream. Okay, next on the agenda is the petition of 561 Randolph Street Realty Trust for finding under chapter 48, section 6, to allow the squaring off of the front of the house and renovate the second floor, center the roof, and add a farmer's porch at 561 Randolph Street. So, notice, Town of Abington zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, March 9th, 2023, at 7:10 PM at the Abington Town Offices, 500 Glenwood's Way, Abington, Mass. On the petition by 561 Randolph Street Realty Trust for finding under chapter 48, section 6, to allow the squaring off of the front of the house, renovate the second floor, center the roof, and add a farmer's porch at 561 Randolph Street. The property is located on assessors map 58, Lot 120, in the R30 zone. And who's the petitioner? Could you just come up to the podium, please? Thanks. Just give us your name and address, please.
Uh, Kenneth Guilfoyle, 561 Randolph Street, Abington, Mass, and also my wife, Tracy Guilfoyle, is also here.
So why don't you tell us a little bit about what you're looking?
Uh, we bought the house, I believe, in August of this year, um, and when we got in the house, um, the house was built, I believe, in 1930. Uh, there's a lot of quirks to it. Um, if you, I believe you have a picture from the town, um, that shows what the house looks like? Yeah? Okay, so if you look at the window right above that front porch area, that was the original center of the house. And what they did is they dormed off to the left, so the entire upstairs is only two rooms, and from the right, from the chimney, all the way up to the peak, it's total useless space. The way the stairs are designed on the far end of the house, they do a turn, which the new stairs have to do a turn, but they're very steep. You have to crouch and stick your head in a skylight to, to stand up in, in the second floor, so the second floor really is totally, at this time, useless. We were, we are a pre-existing non-conforming, so if you look at that picture, on the left corner of that front porch, to where it goes, it's a four-foot by four-foot square that is in the non-conforming location of the lot line. It's all been surveyed, the stakes are still there. And then also, if you look at that picture, on the right side, the far rear of the house, there's a deck, and then there's a, a porch that comes off that rear room. That is also gonna encroach by a foot, uh, when the new, when the deck gets put on. So those are the two areas, uh, that we're encroaching on. And what we're trying to do is square off the front of the house, so that front porch area also is gonna be squared off.
So it's that highlighted portion?
That's the high, so if you look there, and then to the right, you see a set of stairs right at the front, those will be coming out, and that other small square that is not highlighted, that's how the front's gonna get squared off. Those are the two parts that we need to square off, so that the front porch now is indented right there.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then on the back, where it says 12.5 on the left rear corner, right there, we need, like, there's 12 inches of that current deck, it's really a landing with a set of stairs, is, is getting extended a foot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the, and the side setbacks would normally be 20, but you don't have the 20, obviously, because...
We, we don't have the 20, and like, I, if you look, the worst part of it is 7.4, which I don't know if there were setbacks when the house was built in...
Yeah.
1930.
Right.
Um, and if you, if you look at the lot, this house could have definitely gone...
In the middle.
Way to the right, in the middle, it could, I mean, the backyard is just huge, you know, and that garage with the studio in it, it is like, there's an office, it's a studio, and there's a covered porch, it's, it's a pretty big piece of property. And I think we just missed the new lot coverage by 800 square feet. I think it's 30,000, and I think we're 29,200.
Yep, 29,200.
Okay, any questions?
No, it seems like a, you know, per usual for Abington, a crazy lot.
Yeah.
Crazy place, foot house.
And a lot is ridiculous.
It's again, it's the same standard as before, as long as it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, then these are, these are big variations, to be honest with my opinion, it's not...
Uh, no, and I thought, 'cause we're not even, so I think at the 7.4 on the left side is being the one that really encroaches, um, and to be 15 feet...
Yeah, you're not even close to that, so...
Right, and the other thing is, my, my neighbor to the left, his house is, I wanna say, 50, 60 feet, his house is on the corner as you head, and it's way, it's a garrison, and it's way over, you know what I'm saying, so...
Okay. No questions?
No questions.
Would need input from the, uh...
Usually, usually the plan's a little better than this, but, I mean, if you accept them, you accept them.
Yeah. What, what plan is it? I thought you had them all.
No, I, I got them, I just said, usually bigger and stamped and...
Well, they're, they are, oh, well...
These last?
They're at the engineer right now.
Okay.
They have been looked at, uh, by the building department.
Okay. As long as you accept these, Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Okay, all right.
It's more the area that is encroaching, so it's, yeah, yeah. I'm comfortable. All right, so, thank you, Mr. Guilfoyle, we're all set, I think?
Yep.
So we can have a motion to, uh...
Close it from the floor?
Close, they, I, we're gonna have that motion right now, if anybody wanted anything to say.
I'd like to make a motion to close discussion from the public on this petition.
Is there a second?
Uh, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And now we just need a motion on the petition itself? The finding under section 6A, and that the alterations is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing?
Is there a name? Oh, Ring Road Street Realty Trust. All right, I make a motion to accept the finding under 48, 6, for 561 Randolph Street Realty Trust to allow the squaring off of the front of the house and renovate the second floor, center, uh, the roof, and add a farmer's porch at 561 Randolph Street. The property is located in, on assessors map 58, Lot 120, in the R30 zone.
You just referenced the plans.
Yeah, and to do that in accordance with the plans that were submitted at this time for the petition.
And that the alteration is not substantially more detrimental?
And that the alteration is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Okay. Is there a second? Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just make a comment, if I may.
Yes.
I just wanna say, I, I build a lot of houses and hang them in coastal towns, I spend most of my time, but just moved to this town. I, I wanna go on record and just say, uh, the building inspector, Jason Marion, and Mr. Mullen here, I probably had seven or eight different meetings with them, just walking through this, and I wanna say, it's been a pleasure dealing with the three of them.
Nice to hear, thank you.
It, it was really, they really followed through and just made the necessary points on what was very important from getting the stuff to the newspapers and all that, and what a pleasure it was working in with the Town of Abington.
Very kind.
Can I ask you a question?
Thank you for saying that.
Okay. Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Did you grow up in Weymouth?
Yes, I did.
Did you work at Trukey's?
Yes, I did.
You remember, we used to work together?
1978.
Oh, my God.
Oh, that's a, I think I, I think I did.
I think I just raided out our ages.
Yeah, she didn't have to do that.
I saw that, I saw the name, and I said, gee, I remember McKen Guilfoyle from...
With, with Mr. Kenny Coyle, too.
Exactly, yes.
Oh, my God.
That's funny.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Funny you worked there in 783.
Excuse me, um, there isn't a waiting period for signings, right?
I don't know, there is not, to be honest with you. John might know that one.
We already have a discussion.
I don't know.
I have a special part to...
Yeah, right, you got to do it anyways.
I have a special...
Wow.
All right, next on the agenda is the discussion of the proposed amendments to the Abington zoning bylaw, as submitted by the planning board, David 21423. Is that why you're all here, Rick?
You gonna take the mic?
Yeah, you wanna walk? You wanna walk us through them, maybe?
There you go.
What's that? Yeah, I think we have the most recent one.
The original, the amended? We got like three of them. And, uh, responses.
I'll give you, you know, my, I've been working with Liz, trying to get the warrant done.
Yep.
This is the most updated...
Language?
...copy that doesn't have any highlighting in it, I was in the title.
Okay.
Just if it makes it easier on your eyes.
Okay, thanks.
I just gave the bottom of the rip, keeping over the little process.
So, as part of our effort to make sure that we are actually implementing recommendations in our master plan, uh, we had our stormwater permitting authority consultants kind of go through our master plan, go through our bylaws, and find areas where they think we could beef it up, so that, um, we start to identify ways to reduce the environmental impact of development, to make sure store, we're meeting our stormwater permitting needs, and really just cut and tighten language up in a few spots. And they identified a few things, I don't think largely they're anything significant, but, uh, these are a few things they come up with. One, uh, this first one, Article 16, would tweak the, uh, sand and gravel operation bylaw. The, you know, obviously, we don't use this one very often, um, but if someone ever was to come in and try to open a sand and gravel operation, what this says is that when they are done with that operation, they would have to set aside the topsoil, the really good, high-quality topsoil, and then re-spread it out when they're done, so instead of just leaving it as, you know, a hole in the ground, or a barren, you know, pit, that there would have to be some sort of, uh, treatment to it using the old topsoil, so that it regrows naturally.
Would they have to use the original topsoil that was graded off to, to, or could they bring in soil at the end of the operation?
They could bring in soil as long as it has a high organic content.
Okay.
Basically, they wouldn't want to spread something out that just isn't gonna grow anything.
Right, okay.
Um, again, will we ever use this? I don't know, but it's...
It's good to have on the book.
It's good to have. Uh, questions, or should I just...
I'll just give you, yeah.
Article 17, um, looks to tweak our parking bylaw. I think one thing we've learned over the last 20 years is that our current law probably requires a little too much parking at times. And, so, there's a couple things that are happening here. We're looking to give a little bit more flexibility to developers, so that they can reserve more land for green space or stormwater runoff, instead of having to pave everything from kingdom come in order to meet the bylaws. So this would give them a little flexibility in terms of the size of the parking spaces. This isn't necessarily to require them to go smaller, but if they say, for instance, want to have a row that's reserved for, um, compact cars, mini cars, something like that, that they could do that, and it wouldn't be in violation of, of the bylaw.
And you might have, um, you know, electric vehicles to deal with, too.
Correct.
'Cause there's a certain percentage that have to be, especially in new development, that have to be the EV type.
Correct.
So that's another thing that needs to be looked into.
And we know that, um, a lot of consumer cars are just getting bigger, which is why we don't wanna make it a permanent, like, you know, we don't wanna say it has to be a nine-foot space, because the trend right now is to buy really large SUVs and trucks, so, uh, but we wanna give them flexibility where they think it might make sense to have a smaller dimension for parking, give them that flexibility to do so, as well as, um, yeah, as well as potentially reduce the size of the aisle width from 25 feet to 24 feet. Again, it's just a foot, but spread that over a low-sized parking lot, and, you know, and it adds up after a while. And again, they don't have to do this, but it gives us the flexibility, if they feel like it makes sense for their project to go a little bit smaller, they can. Finally, it's to use pervious materials, um, for overflow, long-term, minimally-used parking spaces. Let's say it's a business, they know they're gonna get a crowd once a year, so they're gonna reserve some space over to the side for 20 extra cars, they don't have to pave it, they can use gravel, they could use grass, they could do something compacted, um, that otherwise remains pervious and can drain, um, again, it's flexibility. And this is all buffered by the idea of, if it turns out there's a problem, uh, if we hear from police that there's not enough spaces, it's too crowded, too many accidents, we still have that tool to say, to make them come back and say, you need to fix this.
Does the planning board, you have that?
Yeah.
So what can I ask in regards to that? When engineers look at a plot of land and they're looking at how much offices or how many residences they can put into this plot of land, if you're saying, well, now these guys who design it need, uh, uh, 10% less parking space, yeah, I commend the thoughts of trying to make it more green space, but on the other hand, if I'm sitting on the other end going, how much money can I make? Mom will say, hey... I'm almost saying I can add more bedrooms or more, more office.
Yeah. How do you control that?
Yeah, I mean, that's part of the give and take of the review, site review plan, is the idea, and I think language is in here, it's that you're, we're allowing to say you don't have to provide the parking if you reserve it over, or, you know, in some other space. It's not, instead, you can build on it, it's instead, we keep that as green undeveloped space or pervious surface space to help with, with water flow.
And the fire department should probably look into this, too, just for their calculations.
Yep.
Of course, that's going to happen.
Yeah.
I can answer that, too.
Yeah.
To answer Bill's question directly, anyone who comes with a number of units or a size commercial building has to show on the plan that they can satisfy the existing required minimum number of spots. There is another section of the bylaw that Rick was referring to that says, like, for example, at Obana, on Route 18, the apartment's there, I forget the exact numbers, but they were required to have, let's say, 210 parking spots when you counted up the number of bedrooms. They got approval to build something in the neighborhood of 190, and left the other 20 as a grassed area. And that part of the bylaw says, you have to leave that as available for more parking if the building inspector make?
So you can't build on it.
Exactly. If the building inspector comes back two, three years from now and says, people are parking on the grass?
Right, right.
They can be required. So the whole thing is to try to not over-pave, because that increases more impervious, more drainage issues, and try to have grass, but also balance the whole safety issue.
But you could be losing parking space, too, to the new EV laws, so, because they would have to be the plug-in type, it's just something to think about, too. You're taking away from that number, too.
Yeah.
With those charging stations.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, about getting too into the weeds, I mean, we're talking a situation where, you know, every Target can now have EV chargers, this is part of their business plan.
Yeah.
That's something to be determined, I guess, but I think it's more of just trying to be a little bit more flexible, because we're really, you go over to Target, Walmart, they're never using all those spaces, even on Black Friday, they never get close to it. So I think it's more just like, how can we, how can we be flexible without putting ourselves in a position where we're going to regret it down the road?
So, to that extent, Rick, state of Massachusetts and Chelsea put in a strip line of charger cars. They, we've lost parking spaces.
Right.
All right? And as long as the planning board has it in its arrangements that you can't reduce the number of parking spaces to suplet the problem, that you've lost parking spaces because you're mandated to have electronic generators on the property, that this land is dedicated to external parking only and not for, as you just pointed out, Sean, extended building, or additional building.
Yep.
I'm, I'm okay with that. But the other clause that just came in, like, two weeks ago, is that?
A lot of your cars are getting bigger all of a sudden.
Yeah.
They're not getting smaller. They're actually growing because of the battery mode and the way they have to set it up and the security now. The new Nissans are unbelievable. We just had one at the station the other day to look it over, and it, it's a full-size vehicle.
Yeah. So. And this was where I started, the, and the planning board has to deal with, we've already kind of had this issue with ADA spaces.
Oh, okay.
They were required for, but now, depending on the size of the building or the lot, you have a certain number of ADA. We are also going to see regulations saying you have a certain number of EVs. So any new design's going to have to have that shown into the design.
Right.
Okay.
And one of the things we were looking at when we were trying to rewrite this, so we could comply with the stormwater thing, was, right now, this zoning bylaw requires 10-foot-wide spaces. You have to get a variance from the zoning board in order to break it down to nine, to save the pavement, and blah, blah, blah. It's now written, we, we had proposed, I had proposed, let's rewrite it to say nine feet wide is the minimum standard, unless the planning board says, no, for this use, I want it 10 feet wide. It's Dunkin' Donuts, I want more room to open up shows to it. They chose, I think rightfully, keep it at 10, but give them the ability to shrink some parking spaces down to nine. So, for example, Target, they could say, we want the front 100 spaces to all be 10-foot wide, all those back ones can be nine feet wide, so we can shrink the parking lot a little. They now have the flexibility if this gets approved.
Okay. Would that allow Target, if they could shrink some of those spaces to expand their store?
That's, wouldn't be, no, that's?
Right, because it doesn't allow for more building, it just?
It allows more open green space. Yeah. And they'd have to go through a whole site plan review, so these guys, these guys would say no anytime they want.
Yep.
Just say 10-foot wide everywhere.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Amendment, or, excuse me, Article 18, looks to better define the minimum standards for landscape buffer strips between, in boarding parking lots. The current standard is, it was five trees per 200 linear feet, at least three inches diameter, four feet above the ground, though complex, but. This changes it a little bit, so that it's one tree per every 30 feet, so it would be a little bit more dense than the current standard, while still giving proper escape if it's near a curb, if it's near a street cut, if there's a visual reason why you can't have it in a certain spot. It also changes the standard to, the typical industry standard is breast height, so it's four and a half feet instead of four feet. It's a minor change. Yeah, and then also having landscape areas to incorporate stormwater treatment measures, swales, bio-swales, so that instead of just having water run into an underground tank, maybe it runs into a swale first, then it disperses underground, a little bit more environmentally friendly than concrete and pipes.
With this, I mean, I noticed that some places, since we're using Target, I don't, like, there, you have a lot of bushes that are, like?
Yep.
Top of the bush is maybe four feet high, which impedes sightlines when you are leaving, and, and so, certainly can be added to minimize that, because I just don't like it, I don't think it's very safe.
Yeah, I mean, I wasn't there when Target was, yeah, I wasn't there when they did the Target one, but I always wondered why, it doesn't seem like they actually built trees, it's, I think it's one or two strips of trees, but other than that, it's?
It's a lot closer than 20 feet to the corner.
Yeah. So, I mean, I think that was part of the issue, too, is, or just a recognition that if you put it right on the corner, now you're creating a visual?
Create traffic.
So. Yeah, and when, I represented Target when they came in, and when they first, that main driveway that goes in, and they have the strip with all the shrubbery down there, the initial shrubs they planted were a little high, and it did create blind spots, you couldn't see cars coming over the little crest, there's a little crest in the driveway, it's just enough, though, that if you're trying to cross the driveway, you don't see the person coming. So they went out and replaced all the shrubs to get lower shrubs to that point. So that's part of site plan review now, where they're looking at, in fact, they're creating a list of acceptable trees?
Yeah.
That can be used now. Yeah, I think a good example would be the new dentist office that's opening on Route 18.
Yep.
They go out back there, they have some buffer strips, it looks pretty nice.
Yeah.
And then the last one is one we've been working on for a while.
1920, sorry.
Green roofs, yes. This just, I think, tweaks surface water drainage to allow buildings to have a green roof. I don't know how often they'll be used, but it's a nice feature to have for an option, someone might think it's a great idea to be able to have a green roof, have drainage, grow vegetation, create a little microclimate. It's a good suggestion, doesn't hurt anything to have it in there.
Interesting.
Number 20. So we currently have in about three different spots in our subdivision bylaw, our stormwater bylaw, our regular zoning bylaw, how we treat tree removal. And none of the numbers line up. So part of the, the process was just condensing everything so that everything makes sense and everything speaks the same and everything's equal. But the other part is that, despite what people might think, Abington has actually done a good job preserving its green canopy. And one of the details that's in this report is that Abington's canopy, you know, if you look at a satellite from a satellite, Abington has a lot of green still on top of it, a lot of neighboring towns don't. And so the idea is, we want to keep that, particularly as developers go in, discourage them from essentially clear-cutting as their, you know, their default mode, and present us with a more sensical tree planting plan. Right now, kind of the requirement is street trees. So, for instance, you go down Gene Cal Road, and it's going to be lovely in a couple of weeks during spring, when those pear trees are blossoming, but you realize that it's just street trees and it's nothing else for 80 feet until you get to the backyards. We've had a couple of developments where, you know, prior to the stormwater permitting in place, they just went clear-cut. And they might build something there, they might not, but it's just easier to clear it and move on that way. So the new stormwater permitting rules are very clear, that only trees necessary for construction can come down. So that means if you need to take a tree down for foundation work, for utility lines, for, you know, backyard living space, you can take it down for that, you can't take down trees just because it's easier to clear-cut. So what we're asking with this is, when you come before us for site plan, is to go out, survey, find those mature trees above a certain size, and a lot of towns do this, just identify where they are, and identify which ones have to come down, and which ones could probably stay up. That way, we're not taking down trees we don't need to, we can keep them up. But it also doesn't tie their hands and say that, you know, you can't have a backyard, you can't have a front yard. It's more, if you're going to take down trees for those types of spaces, all right, now you have to come in with a plan, how are you going to replace them? Are you going to have street trees? Are you going to plant some trees along the side between the houses, maybe in the backyard, front yard? Come with us with an idea of how you're going to replace these trees. One standard is one tree for every tree taken down, which might not seem like a lot, but again, if you, I mean, a backyard, you'd be taking down 30 trees, we're not going to ask them to plant back 10. We understand that, you know, there's curb appeal and everything else.
Is this more, more like for subdivisions and stuff like that, or?
Yeah.
Because we've seen it here, we've seen the clear cuttings.
Yeah.
We've seen two of them, at least recently.
Yes.
And I understand that.
The main one are subdivisions, and the stormwater permitting rules get triggered after an acre. If you're disturbing an acre of land?
Okay.
The permitting comes in, you have to come in and talk to us about that. So, again, we're not telling people what they have to do, we're saying, we want you to show us the work, that you've gone out there, you've looked at the site, you've thought about it, you've come back with an idea, here's the list of good native trees that are going to grow well in this area, you tell us what you want.
So as part of their submission to you would be the, the trees that they are there now and then?
Yeah.
As a plan going forward?
Yeah, and again, part of the problem right now is that the language really only now calls for street trees, which means they have to be near the sidewalk, they have to be near utility lines, have to be, and, and we've had people come in and say, you can plant these street trees, and we're going to cut them down as soon as we move into the house, because we don't want them there. So the idea more is to give a little bit more flexibility, maybe street trees aren't right for development for a property, but you have to put something up somewhere, and you have to give us some thought about it, instead of just doing the, kind of, the bare minimum.
Does the, does it take into consideration the hardwood and softwood?
Yes.
If you're taking down 50 hardwoods, you just can't throw up pear trees and say that's the replacement.
That's exactly one of the things we're talking about, where, you know, it doesn't help if, you know, you go up to Colonel Hunt, and you just see that incredibly tall, gorgeous canopy of trees, if you cut that down and replace with aubrey's, you're not helping, you're not really doing what you need to do.
Okay.